Looks like we have everyone here. I would like to welcome you all to the June 7th meeting of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. Item one, could I please have a roll call?
Yes. Danielle Henderson.
Here.
Michael D. Martini.
Here.
Bill Hauck.
Here.
Michael Drinkwater.
Here.
John Inlow.
Here.
John Flansburgh.
Mickey Hazelwood.
Here.
John Martini.
Here.
Darren Price.
Here.
Dave Solero.
Here.
Marvin Wright.
Here.
John Zimmerman. And non-voting members, Harry Farnestock, Thomas Payette, Mylin Nogoyan, Cindy Turcheck, Don Penrose, Ron Penrose, excuse me. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number two, public comment. I have two public comment cards, so I will call you up in the order they were received. You each have three minutes, and if anyone else has public comment, please fill out a card and hand it to the clerk. Our first speaker is Stuart Mackey. Mr. Mackey.
My name is Stuart Mackay. Thank you. What I was interested in was the TMAO situation here. It seems that there's TMAO people sitting on a board, and these people are nothing more than a piece of paper. Okay, they are 277. They're an inter-local agreement. I noticed you guys really turn out the inter-local agreements, and money is involved. I have talked with the assessor and the, I guess it would be the treasurer, and they're having a real problem. I don't know whether it was you folks or who that turned over the water to TMAO without any authority. It's deeded water, and I don't understand what happened, but it's being looked into federally. So I just wanted you folks to know, because that kind of stuff can't be done. But the, there's two people on here, John Inlow and John Zimmerman, who sit on a board, and I can't believe that someone who is on a 277, which is an inter-local agreement, have any powers. Now, they have duties, yes, but they don't have powers. So if you folks are putting them on a panel and they vote, that's absolutely wrong. And I would love to find an NAC from the state that says that inter-local agreements are allowed to vote. Okay? There was so much stuff that I saw from your last meeting that I sort of got set back really, really well here. So I'm going to go over this and find out what's going on, but there seems to be a whole bunch of money going with these inter-local agreements that you keep coming up with. So need to follow that money. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
And I'm also the United States President. I wanted to talk to you about the MRI. There are two tanks parked inside the parking area where the Bank of America used to be. And right next door is the Livingstone Church. These two MRIs were used to kill and murder the U.S. military. They put them to sleep, and they were pulled through the MRI. Also, there's an opening at the end where they put their head through and chopped their heads. I just wanted to tell you, you know, the MRI is now sitting in my living room. And they have been noticing that the U.S. military have been on the property trying to protect me and my neighbors. And I just wanted to let you know, they were put to sleep, there must have been at least 27 of them, and I thought that would be enough to help us. But unfortunately, it was not enough, because there was enough of you to put them to sleep and put them inside the MRI, or they could suffer and suffocate until they are dead inside the MRI. This is not the way to treat the U.S. military. They are here to protect us in order that the enemy refuses to stay out of our area. You belong in Mexico, the old Mexico. You are not human. You don't even live here. You even tried to steal our homes, our houses, our apartments, and you say it's yours because you have no money to pay for rent. That's not true. You had to kill us. You had to murder us in order to move yourself in. Now it's yours. But later on, less than six months later, you get evicted. You're thrown off the property because you really don't live there. You don't belong there. But you still think that you could bring in a MRI and kill and murder and take over the entire neighborhood because you thought you could get rid of all the U.S. military? It's, you know, this is unreal for you to be here in the first place. I don't know why you're still walking the streets.
Do I have any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, on to item number four, approval of the minutes from the May 3, 2017 meeting. Again, I guess, do I have any questions or corrections from anyone? No? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Martini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Solero. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, on to item number five. Discussion and possible approval of a scope of work and budget not to exceed $21,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund for Phase One of the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency project to develop a regional stormwater drainage network geographic information system map, and if approved, authorize the program manager to execute an inter-local agreement with the Regional Planning and Governing Board for that purpose and provide limited in-kind services as specified in the scope of work. And I will turn it over to Jim Smithman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you recall, last meeting related to you, the Western Regional Water Commission's direction to staff regarding this proposal, and one thing that Jeremy Smith from Regional Planning and I promised is that we would bring back a more detailed scope of work for the first phase of this project, and so that is attached to your staff report. So I'll summarize it real quick. Jeremy has a PowerPoint presentation that he can go through and give you more detail, but I figured I'd give you a thumbnail since I've got the mic right now. So what the task would include would be just accounting for the existing GIS data for stormwater facilities and conveyances, and then to acquire the data that's available and relevant to the project, compile into a central database, then evaluate the data for its degree of connectedness or disconnectedness, and then, and spatial coverage, and then come up with some matrices to describe the connectedness and coverage and generate a report on that, and then evaluate the, whatever attribute data is available for the data as well. The deliverables would include the collection of the GIS data into one central database, a final report, and then some presentations back to this body, to the Western Regional Water Commission and the Regional Planning Governing Board. The schedule would be about four months, start sometime August or September, and then finish by the end of the calendar year. The budget includes about $14,000 for labor, $5,700 for materials, and the total is just under $20,000. The contract itself has a not-to-exceed amount of $21,000 consistent with the Western Regional Water Commission's direction. We have drafted an inter-local agreement, and it goes to the Regional Planning Governing Board tomorrow at their meeting. Is that correct? Okay. And so we're expecting favorable receipt of that and approval at the Governing Board tomorrow. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you or to Mr. Smith for the presentation.
I sure do. Yeah. Would you guys like to see? Okay. Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. I'm Jeremy Smith with the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. Happy to be back here today to talk about detailed scope for Phase One of the stormwater project. Everything Jim said is true. So the objective here was initially, we were asked by the Western Regional Water Commission to look into scoping, sort of finding out what kind of stormwater GIS data was out there from a regional sense, what it would take to put that together to complete the network if anything was missing, and, you know, basically be able to, hopefully in the future one day, use that GIS network for stormwater modeling down the road. Per your guys' previous recommendation from before of looking at, you know, Phase One pretty much only, and going back to the RPGB and the WRWC, approval for Phase One was agreed to by both of those boards. So that's what we have here today, Phase One. Here's sort of the study area, you know, we tend to look at regional planning at the TMSA, Truckee Meadows Services area, but I think that the scope of this is slightly larger. You know, we want to include, say, Washoe Valley, maybe some areas north of the TMSA, Palomino Valley, for example. I mean, there are chunks, islands of TMSA to the north that are largely undeveloped, but the focus would really be on the developed areas within the Truckee Meadows region and evaluating, basically as Jim mentioned, the connectedness of the stormwater network, which in all cases might not need to be connected, so we understand that, but typically would be. And then the spatial coverage, and we're hoping to use a developed area, whether it's from the Washoe County parcels, what's developed, or national land cover data set, this sort of thing, to understand where do we have development, and then compare that to where we have the stormwater data already in a GIS fashion. So this is the general area we'd be looking at. Again, the analysis approach, initially just helping, or using Jim's help to contact, many of you are indicated in the scope as contacts, primary contacts, to bring this information together. So just go out there and try to cast a wide net and get all the information we have today in GIS describing stormwater. Take that back, put it into a centralized GIS database, get it into the map, bring in these development layers, and attempt to start looking at, like I say, spatial coverage. Where do we see development, but we don't have stormwater GIS data? And then the idea would be to report that back by hydro basin, basically giving you a metric of completeness within a given hydro basin. Furthermore, we want to assess the sort of compatibleness of the attribute data and how well-filled out it is. Often, you'll hear about fill rates for columns of data. So curious to know, with many different sources for this data, right, what sort of fields are being captured and how much of that information is actually in there? Pipe diameters, culvert diameter, that sort of thing. That's the general gist of it, but I imagine as we go through it, we'll, as we get the data, you know, it's going to help us to understand exactly what methods we might want to employ. And the whole time, we're going to be working with you guys and Jim to make sure that we're, you know, we're doing the best we can and checking back in, so. Deliverables, this is sort of what I came up with, I mean, it's not limited to this, but these three major deliverables, I think, should absolutely be there. Number one is the data itself. Once we bring it all together, get it into the centralized database, have these pieces all together, that's going to be in the regional data warehouse at Truckee Meadows Regional Planning, available for use by other government entities as needed. Also, a final report describing by hydro basin the metrics that we come up with to explain where we have coverage, where we don't, what's going on, describe the attribute comparison, and then a series of maps, probably by hydro basin, also showing what we found. And then finally, bringing that as a summary, as a presentation to this board, to the Western Regional Water Commission, and to the Regional Planning Governing Board. Now, I would just point out that if we were to continue with subsequent phases that were initially contemplated, that centralized GIS piece would be the jumping-off point that then we would try to build from there to complete the network, and hopefully we'll be pleasantly surprised. I mean, I honestly don't know what our coverage is exactly like. Based on what you guys have said, I think we're probably in pretty good shape, so I'm hoping that at the end of this, we find that there's really not that much more to do. Okay, quick take on the schedule. Starting, I'd like to get started as soon as possible after July 1, but we do have the regional plan update ramping up and happening right now. We're into that, so I've just built in a little flexibility to make sure I don't get sideways on duties related to that. First month would be, again, collecting the data. Second month would be really getting in and doing the assessment. That might take even six weeks after that, after we have some findings, want to reconnect with staff, make sure that it seems logical how we approached it and what we found, that we didn't miss something, and then finally draft the report in the last month and then deliver the presentations. As far as budgets, most of this really is staff time. We did a little bit of changing from the initial scope to bring some of the intern hours that were initially contemplated in the second phase into the first phase to give us, again, more flexibility around our workload with the regional plan, getting that intern in there, doing some of the assessment, but there absolutely will be work by me and the GIS planning analyst, Amy and Kerwin, in our office, and a little bit of overhead for our director as well. With regard to materials, we're planning to do this in an enterprise geodatabase, and right now, we have several licenses for ArcGIS. One of them is the lowest level of licensing. It's called ArcGIS Basic Desktop. And in order to work with the centralized database, we need to bump up to the standard level. So that's the cost for software right there, to get this intern, have that capacity to work with the data in that centralized mode. Possibly we'll need some hardware for the intern to work on, so that's the laptop. And then there could, I foresee there will be targeted field verification of some of this data. We don't just want to trust necessarily every single thing about it. We probably want to create a randomized grid, some spot checking to go out and make sure that what we're seeing in the data matches what's on the ground, and also get a feel for what that is, so we kind of know what might be anticipated if we need to fill areas in. So the mobile map or GPS is a really cost-effective GPS for putting actual GIS data into the GPS. You know, Trimble units, they might cost upwards of $5,000 or $6,000. This is a fairly low-cost solution that will allow us to be in the field with the data and capturing that. So that's really how the budget breaks down. And I just want to point out that this is another great example of, you know, continuing the work that we've been very successful with Jim and you guys and the WRWC, looking at GIS data to support water and wastewater planning in the region. You know, we had the inter-local around scenario planning. Certainly took a little longer than we had hoped, probably in the beginning, but we were able to return a bunch of money back and, you know, come in under budget on that project, so that was something we were pretty happy about. And now we have that capability. So this will further feed into that whole suite of tools around GIS and water and wastewater planning. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have about the scope.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Commissioner Price.
Thank you, Jeremy. This proposal creates, you're bringing on an intern, so it's a new position, and you want to buy hardware and software for this position too, correct?
Correct, yeah. It'd be an upgrade of software, yep, and some hardware, yep.
Which includes this ArcGIS license upgrading that you were talking about just now?
Correct, yes.
So in essence, you're going to install this on this new laptop and then give it to this intern to perform this work, correct?
Pretty close. It's a floating license, so actually anyone in the office could end up using it, but it would be dedicated during the project scope for the intern, yes.
Okay. And then my other question is to staff, because there seems to be a lot of doubt in the staff report where it talks about there's may overlap current efforts by Truckee Meadows Flood Management Authority. So we don't know if it's going to overlap or not, and that's part of the analysis. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. So that's part of, on the contact list, sort of the second page of the proposal, Truckee Meadows Flood Project would be one of the primary contacts. We'd find out right away what's going on there.
So the existing map, the existing model, though, has a layer of flood that's already recorded, correct?
The existing model for land use that we use?
Yes.
We do have the FEMA floodways included in that, absolutely.
So there is a layer for flood that already has data in it?
It does for, yes, for the 100-year flood plane.
And so, Jim, I see the second bullet too, is that the proposed project hasn't been presented to the Regional Planning Governing Board, and it's going tomorrow. Is that what you're saying?
We presented the initial scope that I brought you guys here about a month ago, and so they saw that, but they have not seen the detail of Phase One yet, no. That would go tomorrow.
Because staff wrote in their report that you're not certain that there would be authorized to even do the work due to the possible time constraints of some other projects, et cetera. Is that correct?
If that's what the staff report says, that's correct.
Well, that's, I, well, I'm assuming you wrote it, Jim. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So is that, is that true?
I think that they received the scope of work favorably and directed their staff, RPGB staff, to move forward.
That's correct. They directed me to keep going.
Okay, so we're still waiting for the approval, which will be at a future meeting, then?
Tomorrow, they would approve the inter-local.
Okay, and then the third bullet says the scope of work may be premature in relation to clearly identifying the desired outcomes from the project. So there's a lot of doubt associated with that. And then counsel, I would ask you, did Assembly Bill 375 pass?
Good. I was going to jump in here anyway. Thank you. Those bullets in that staff report reflect concerns that were raised by this commission when this proposal was first brought here, and those concerns were presented to the Western Regional Water Commission. And I think that reference to "will be presented tomorrow," that was to the first presentation to the Regional Planning Governing Board.
Ah, so that's happened.
So that's just a clarification on, those are old. Those came out of an old staff report. Is that correct?
Right. The background is just re-.
Yeah, that's background.
That comes along with this.
Okay. So none of those questions had been answered yet. And then to answer your second question, my understanding is that SB 375, the flood project bill, did pass just yesterday or two days ago, just right at the last minute. And it is now on the governor's desk, not yet signed, I believe. So if anyone has more up-to-date information on that, I'd appreciate their joining in, because I don't have the details of the bill, but I can answer that it did pass, and it's awaiting governor's signature.
Well, I don't know all the details, but the way I understand it is it avoids the cap, but it does allocate additional funding to the regional flood authority. Is that correct?
No, no.
Okay. Please.
And I don't want to speak out of turn either, but my understanding of that bill is that it's enabling legislation similar to what was the process that was followed by the school district for funding capital projects. So that legislation would create a committee that would investigate potential funding options for the flood project and write a ballot question that would go to the public vote in 2018 to pursue additional funding for the flood project. It does not commit any funding at this time for the flood project.
Do you know more, Chris? Is that, I thought you were talking about it. Okay.
So, and I appreciate your comments. If I could just remind everyone again of what Mr. Smithman said earlier, the Western Regional Water Commission has, you know, we made a recommendation to the commission. They decided to move forward despite our concerns at that point in time. Those, some of those concerns have been addressed, which is why Jeremy came back and gave a presentation, and we're only dealing with Phase One. Part of our concerns dealt with the fact that, you know, they were, we were going after three phases of work, and a lot of, you know, Phase Two and Phase Three were sort of uncertain.
Sure.
So what we're looking for today, if I'm understanding this correctly, is approval of the expenditure not to exceed $21,000, and then directing Mr. Smithman to enter into a contract to do this work. So that's kind of where we're at today.
I just want a clarification.
Sure, no. And they were good comments. So with that, do you have any other comments, or do we have additional discussion from the commission?
No additional comments from me. I think you summarized the action that I'm requesting.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes. As the scope begins to clear up, I'm gaining a better understanding as to what this project would involve and what the final product might look like, which appears to me to be essentially a map. And it's compiling information together that is available.
Correct. And to see where we stand.
So what I'd like to say with regards to this item, as it gets, as this scope gets cleared up, and I would not want to suggest that this scope is not necessary, but what I'm seeing is another scope that should be being developed in parallel with this scope, now that this is refining itself to something different than maybe what's immediately necessary. But just as a little background, understood the impetus behind the generation of this scope was resulting from the rainfall and the current flooding situation in the North Valleys. And I would like to say that we're not in, I don't believe we're in a situation where we can sit back and wait four months to start looking at a map, which would be done in October or November, when we've got the water sitting out there now. The current situation is that the water in two or three lakes out in the North Valleys has risen to near-flood levels, and it's dropped only slightly to this point in time. So it's still more or less at flood levels. And just roughly, we could be expecting two or three feet of evaporation if we have no rain from now until the end of September. At that point in time, we're still going to be left with much of the water that we have out there now, maybe half of it. So where I'm going with this, I don't want to discount the scope of work, I'm just wanting to make it clear that the scope of work seems to be deviating from what we might really need. And that is, is we need to be prepared with options well prior than September to know how we're going to handle the flooding situation in case we have a normal or maybe a wetter-than-normal year starting next September.
Those are, those are very good comments, and if I could interject, I think there's a lot of that work that is ongoing from the jurisdictions who are in charge of that, and I don't know if Commissioner Solero, if you'd like to speak to that, but my understanding is a lot of information's being collected and plans are being made.
That's correct. You know, we've got the engineers here at Washoe County, working with City of Reno, looking at all three of those basins up north. We're meeting on a weekly basis with deliverables here in the very near future to deal with this short-term kind of 18-month period of time to handle, not only, you know, to really identify the evaporation, to really understand the protection that's in place, and whether it needs to be bolstered for next year, and moving beyond. So I feel very comfortable that, you know, this scope of work is something completely different than those activities that are, that are going on, you know, as the recovery portion of the current flooding situation continues.
Well, I'm hearing that, and that's what's really bothering me here, because, you know, the City of Sparks, the City of Reno, Washoe County, these are individual authorities, if you will, and the people that are working in those bodies are doing the jobs for which they're empowered to do, which I believe is essentially on the, on the city boundaries or the county boundaries or the TMSA or something else. The question that I was looking for before here with regards to this item is, is who is, who is the overseer of what these individual entities are doing? And I believe it's this board and the Western Regional Water Planning Commission, and maybe the flood. Water Planning Commission, and maybe the flood district, but it's never been clarified to me as to whether the flood district actually goes out there or not.
We are not involved in that.
So, that's my question, is who is responsible here? And I, maybe we need a committee. I don't see any evidence that the domestic well owners are being represented here, because I'm not being invited to these meetings that are going on at the City of Reno or somewhere else. And yet, I see the water that's out there, and I've made, I have my own model that's been more accurate than anybody's else's at this point in time. And I think we need to, I don't want to discount getting this map together, but I want to suggest that now that the scope of work is being refined, that we need to maybe in parallel start the other part of the scope of work. So, that's my input into the situation.
Well, thank you for that. Go ahead.
Jim, question for you, procedurally here. So, it's already been approved. You're in an ILA going forward tomorrow. What do they charge us of doing here today? I'm not sure what a vote even does.
Let me, can I jump in and answer that?
Please.
And I'll go back to the history a little bit, because it's necessary to explain this. So, first of all, the Western Regional Water Commission said, "Let's look at some GIS mapping." And they directed Regional Planning to bring a proposal to this board, to the Northern Nevada Water Commission, which they did. And you guys raised all of those concerns that Darren pointed out, and really recommended that it just be put on hold for now. Let's wait and see, I think 30 days, something like that. So, we took that to the Western Regional Water Commission, staff did, with those recommendations. The Western Regional Water Commission said, "We think something needs to be done now, so let's just go ahead with Phase One." So, they approved Phase One. They approved funding not to exceed $21,000. They put that in their budget. So, the funding really is a done deal. When it comes down to the technicalities, the only reason you're here is because of Resolution Number One that says, I mean, the only reason this is here, again, is first, let me say, first of all, to advise all of you about exactly what this scope of work is and what Regional Planning will be doing, and authorize Jim to sign this ILA, because the resolution adopted by the Western Regional Water Commission authorizes him to sign contracts up to $25,000 upon recommendation of this body, the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. So, they've approved the funding. I guess we could take it directly back to them and say, "Okay, the Northern Nevada still thinks they should delay this, and they've raised a whole bunch of issues, so let's just have the chairman of that body sign it." But the more, the most important reason is to keep all of you advised, to see, to have you see the specifics of this Phase One, which I don't believe will result in a map. This is just the first step toward the map. Is that correct?
Well, I think there will be several maps, and there will be a report that describes, gives information to all of you to say, "How do we want to take on maybe another phase? Do we want to do it?"
Okay. Do we want to go further after this?
Exactly.
But the real reason is to authorize Jim to sign the contract, because it's under $25,000, upon your recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm ready with the motion.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'll move to a.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Authorize Mr. Smitherman to approve this scope work and budget and enter into an ILA.
Okay. And do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Second from Commissioner Enlow. Do we have any further discussion? Okay. I do have a public comment card. I should call for that before the vote.
Where is it?
All right. So, we'll do that. Kathy Brandhorst?
Oh, my God, if she's going to do it. Is it doing it yet? Try to limit your time to the agenda.
Right. And please remember, I need to comment on this particular agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I'm also the United States President. Well, I do know what is going on here. $21,000, I believe, he has been sued. And because of this, you know, you're lowering the ocean. The water is actually disappearing out of our area. I go down to the marina once in a great while, and I have a chance to go down there, and the water was looking really good until last week, when I went down there. The boats were lifted right out of the water, because there's no water left. Well, it's lower. And I just wanted to tell you, you know, that the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency project to develop of a regional storm-water drainage network geographic information system. What does all that mean? Well, I'll let you know. There is no drainage, because there's not going to be any water. Also, I just wanted to tell you, you know, the regional stormwater, well, we have to wait until winter for that, because now we're in the summer. It's going to get drier. I just don't know what, what to do, you know, to help it out, to bring back the water what we had. And the river has been going down, too, because the river is not flowing as fast as it used to be. And the bombs are used to hold the ocean. Yes, it is, isn't it? You're going to hold the ocean back, so you can steal the rest of the water out of here. There's not going to be much ocean left. With the Regional Planning Governing Board for that purpose, that's what I think. And provide limited in-kind services as specified in the scope of work. What scope of work? Stealing ocean water.
All right. Thank you. I don't have any more public comment cards. Is there anyone else who should speak on this item?
All right, seeing none. We have a motion and a second. I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Okay. On to item number six. Review and possible approval of the Western Regional Water Commission routine operating budget for non-staff services for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and possible direction to staff. I'll turn it over to Mr. Smitherman.
Thank you again. This is largely procedural. We've done this, I believe, every year since 2008, but once the Western Regional Water Commission has approved the budget, then we have asked for authorization for staff to approve routine operating budget items that are listed in that portion of the budget. So, what we do is bring that back to you for specific approval after the Western Regional Water Commission adopts the budget, so that you're actually authorizing staff to make expenditures out of the approved budget, the approved routine operating budget. So, procedural again, but just asking for your approval for this item, so that I don't have to bring these items back to you piecemeal at every, every item for small expenditures.
Okay. With that, do we have any questions or comments for Jim? Anyone? No? Would anyone like to make a motion?
No.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Price. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second by Commissioner Solero. I will, do, let's see. Do we have any public comment? I don't have any cards. No? Okay. I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number seven. Discussion and possible approval of a proposal from the University of Nevada Reno for funding in an amount not to exceed $25,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund to support the Water Innovations Campus Project, and if approved, direct the program manager to execute an interlocal agreement with UNR for that purpose, and possible direction to staff. Mr. Smitherman?
Thanks again. If you remember last March, Dr. Pagila from UNR came to talk about the concept of the Water Innovation Campus, and, and the request from staff was to ask you to put in the budget, $25,000, or recommend in the budget, $25,000 for this purpose to the Western Regional Water Commission. So, the budget was approved by the commission with that for fiscal years 17, 18. And so, this is simply an item to authorize against staff to enter into a contract with the university system to make those funds available for, for partial funding of the Water Innovation Campus Project. Recent, and I've, I've attached the flyer that was kind of an informational on, on the concept for the, for the campus, as well as some detail in your, in your staff report. One thing that I'll add, about halfway down the staff report, it says an inaugural event is planned the third week of August. If you want to mark your calendar, I believe August 14th is the date that, that's been agreed to at this point in time, and it would be sometime in the afternoon, probably three, three to five. But that's, I believe that's a little bit soft right now. So, planning will be forthcoming on that event. But the, the item here just requests that you approve the funding not to exceed $25,000, and then to direct me or authorize me to enter into the interlocal agreement with, with UNR for the purpose of the project.
Okay. Perfect. Do I have any questions? Does anyone have questions, comments regarding this item? No? Okay. I do have one public comment card. Again, comments are limited to three minutes. Kathy Brandhorst. And just as a reminder, if your comments can be specific to item number seven, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. I just came, well, I was in the area at the University of Nevada, and I was in shock. Everybody complained, you know, about the shooting, the machine guns inside the buildings. All the buildings were being rebuilt, but they cannot finish them. Why? Because I heard one man say, "Well, we're not going to be able to finish this building. We're going to have to stop working on it right now, because they're handing us Kathy Brandhorst checks. They're not going to be able to finish that building, no, because you can't be stealing my money." And that's exactly what's going to happen. You can't be, you know, accepting those checks, because it will put you out of business. You will be charged embezzlement. You can't build nothing here at all. And I just wanted to let you know, I was still in the area. I walked down maybe a block and a half from the bus stop, and those houses were still boarded up. Blood and flesh inside every house that I walked by. They said they were all boarded up because of that reason. One lady said, "Well, I was evicted." I believe the rest of them were all evicted. Well, what are you going to do with those houses? Just let them rot with blood and flesh in them? Also, I just wanted to tell you, you know, even across the street was the parking lot. It looked like, you know, it was waving in the ocean, because it was not even hardly anything left of the parking lot either. And I also walked down to see the apartments that I was supposed to move into. And I was in shock, because right next door, they said they had to rebuild the whole apartment building because of machine guns, shotguns. They even had bombs and grenades inside there, because they couldn't move in for nothing. It was horrible. You just don't know what I saw in that area. I, I almost gave up on the apartment that I was supposed to move into, because I am still looking for a place to live. And the University of Nevada, they're all children. They're less than 20 years old.
Okay. I'll bring you back to the commission. No additional comments or discussions. We are looking for a motion.
Um, moving for the, let's see, how to write this? It's, uh, moving for the funding amount not to exceed $25,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund, for the Water Innovations Campus Project, and directing program managers to have the ILA with UNR.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Drinkwater. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I have a motion, carries.
Okay. Item number eight. Discussion and possible recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission to approve a three-month no-cost time extension for two interlocal agreements with the Desert Research Institute. It looks like one is for the cloud seeding project for the 2016, 2017 season, and two of the, is the cloud seeding monitoring gauge project. Possible direction to staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you can see from the staff report, this is a, all this is basically a three-month request on two different projects, both related to cloud seeding. One is the cloud seeding, the other is the cloud seeding precipitation monitoring installations. The issue is that the contract terminates it basically the 1st of July, but access is, is not going to happen. So, they're going to require access at a later date, so we're just looking to move this an extra three months onto the end of the contract. This is very simple. It's just an administrative requirement. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Wessel? No? All right. Well, we're looking for a pretty simple motion, if someone would like to make it. Go ahead, Commissioner Enlow.
My move to approve making a recommendation for a three-month no-cost extension for both the 2016, 17 cloud seeding project and monitoring gauge project interlocal agreements.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Price was opposed. All right. Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Was somebody else?
Commissioner?
Oh, I, my apologies. Okay. So, we had two opposing votes, Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Price, and the rest were ayes. And the motion still carries. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item nine. Discussion and possible approval of a second amendment to the interlocal agreement with DRI, the Desert Research Institute, for continuing maintenance of the Washoe Evapo Transpiration Project, extending the agreement for a term of one year in an amount not to exceed $10,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund, and if approved, authorize the program manager to execute the amendment for that purpose. And again, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wessel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is, is a typical item we see every year. It's just a maintenance contract to help us maintain the Washoe ET project. The expenditure of funds does not amount to the full $10,000. It's just there for contingency purposes. And we do anticipate, though, this year, the addition of two additional weather stations that'll be part of this budget also. So, this is, this is just a continuation of our Washoe ET project. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any comments, questions? Go ahead.
I have a little question here. I noticed the other day that the Weather Bureau or service has out in Cold Springs at least three stations.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments, questions? Go ahead.
I have a little question here. I noticed the other day that the Weather Bureau or service has out in Cold Springs at least three stations. And I don't know that they do all the same things that's proposed in this Cold Springs station here, but do we know why those other stations couldn't be used?
Well, I can say that there are many weather stations in and around. In fact, the NDOT has quite a few of them, along with the Federal Highway Department and so on. But the weather stations that are associated with those types of programs don't meet the criteria for Evapo transpiration. As you know, the Penman, modified Penman equation requires certain parameters, and they have to be monitored in certain, under certain conditions. And typically, that requirement requires that the, that the weather or the parameters being collected must be done so in an area that's surrounded by grass or, and so there are specific requirements related to the Evapo transpiration. And that's the primary purpose of these, of these stations, not so much weather-related, although they do provide that data also. So, that would be how I'd respond to that.
Okay, so I guess the answer is, is they have looked at those other stations. For instance, some of the names that are associated with them are, I think, MADIS 5335, their, their Weather Bureau stations.
Right. And, yeah, I could defer that to Mr. McCurdy, who's here from DRI, to answer that question.
Thank you for coming in. If you could just restate your name for the record.
Glad to. Yes, my name's Greg McCurdy. I'm with the Desert Research Institute and atmospheric scientist. A lot of the data that you're referring to comes through the Matus program, and we actually do have access to that data, but it is different. In fact, in particular, the big thing that the most, none of those stations collect is solar radiation, which is the driving force for being included to figure out the Evapo transpiration.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments, questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, or, the question I have is simply, you know, the data exists in, one of the primary intents is to help fine-tune daily irrigation controllers. Do we have any way of measuring how many users we have out there?
Yeah, that's a good question. Up till now, Michelle Brechner had been providing us quarterly reports. She's no longer at DRI. But I will tell you that the last report that we received showed that there was, just recently, we placed all the stations, I believe on Agromet, is that correct? And Agromet is where most of the ET controllers go to to find information by location. And since we did that, the numbers have jumped considerably, almost by an order of magnitude, the number of hits to the station. So, basically, the people going to the station, or, I'm not even sure if it's automated, maybe, I'm not sure how that would, how the count works, but.
It is partially animated, or automated, sorry, not animated. At the same time, two things have existed. One is that the data, or Michelle and I myself, actually, last year, went out to the Landscape Association and let them know about the resource and tools that were there. That, I think, is another thing that has helped increase the impact of usage. One of the things we just, about a year ago, implemented, that I'm still in the process of processing through our data, is to actually look at how much of the data is requested. Prior, we could look at the web hits and number of, amount of traffic that was coming, but couldn't actually really evaluate who was actually collecting data and what stuff they were looking at. We can now. So, that's one of the things we'll be adding to some of the upcoming reports that we put out. So, it'll give a little better indication of the quantity. Now, a lot of the ET controllers, they actually will collect the data either from us directly through Mezzawest, or they can't even start getting it from Agromet. And once they do go some of those routes, other than the fact we know that we've forwarded to the, the data to Mezzawest or to Agromet, we have no way to really find out exactly who's using their systems. But that's nature of the beast. That's the web.
And I'd make a side comment on this, is that originally, this was set up so people could go to the website and actually calculate their ET. And then, there's a little routine there, you can do the calculation, figure out, you know, your runtimes for your various sprinkler systems. Just on a side note, while passing through Home Depot the other day, I noticed for the first time that they have residential ET controllers now that are being sold. And actually, there's a couple of them on the market, and it seemed to have just come up. So, I would expect that more of them will be put in use.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay. I do have one public comment card. So, Kathy Brandhorst, if you are available. Comments are limited to three minutes and should be on the agenda item number nine that we are discussing.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I'm also the United States President. Let's see. For continuing maintenance of the Washoe Evapo transpiration project, extending the agreement of a term of one year. Well, you know, just like I said earlier, the water is going down, and it's going to be evaporating, you know, in the water areas. And we're not going to have very much water running again. And, you know, it's going to cost lots and lots of money. It's not going to just be the amount not to exceed $10,000. It's going to be a lot more than that. We're talking about $10 billion or more. And I just wanted to tell you, the program manager to execute the amendment for that purpose. Well, even though you think that you can still get away with our water here in our area and take it someplace else and think that you can use it there because you are, you don't have the water anymore in your area, well, what happened to that water? I'll tell you what happened. When you put up the poles and wires, you're going to be stealing the water from your neighbors. The water is going to be extremely high because that neighbor is only going to pay maybe $40 of that water. The other water is going to be $1 million or maybe even more because how many are going to be on that water? Maybe 12, 15 people? Well, that's exactly what I'm talking about. You know, when people have to steal our water from our apartments, that's what I live in, and my water is getting lower and lower today, and I couldn't believe how low it was. And the water that I use is the water that I have in my home. I don't have hot water because they also drain the hot water out of my hot water heater. And, you know, this is getting out of hand. I can't even take a bath because my water is cold already. And I am really, really upset, you know, that the poles and wires are being put up all over the cities. I mean, even Sparks, Reno, and other cities too, where they cannot afford to pay for their water. This water is going to, not to be paid by anybody unless the Planning Commission wants to, you know, go ahead and spend the money of $1 million or more to put it back.
Thank you. All right, I don't have any other public comment cards, so I will move along. And if somebody would like to make a motion, we're looking for a motion to approve. What are we looking for, a motion? Approve the time extension for this contract.
Move to the room.
Motion by Commissioner Martini, do I have a second? Anyone? Thank you. Motion by, a second by Commissioner Wright. So, all those in favor? Oh, go ahead, sorry. Extending the agreement for a term of one year.
Nine.
Where am I?
You got it.
Yeah, that's nine. Am I misreading this? Possible approval of a, well, it's a contract amendment. Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve the contract amendment.
For $10,000.
Okay, and it extends it for one year. Sorry, I forgot about the $10,000.
Not to be confused with $10 billion, just $10,000.
Right, $10,000, right. Yes, please.
I move to approve the second amendment to the ILA with DRI, amount not to exceed $10,000 and authorize Mr. Smith to execute a second amendment to the ILA for that purpose.
Thank you so much. And we had a second, would you, thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the correct motion with direction. So, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, now on to item number 10. Discussion and possible recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission to approve a proposal from DRI for continuation of the regional precipitation monitoring project in an amount not to exceed $20,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund, and possible direction to staff. I will turn it over to Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a, this is the second year that we're engaging in the monitoring of precipitation cans, a project that we took over from Washoe County. It was kind of an orphaned project. We have, as it says, as it indicates, an 18-plus-year record on some, almost 80 precipitation cans that are in the field. And these are, this presents a very significant record for areas that we don't have any data within the county. So, in the interest of not allowing that to just expire, we've taken over this project. And we're, we're still working out the annual costs on this. Last year, we approved it for $20,000. Mr. McCurdy is here again on this issue, if you have any questions. We just did pull him in from Peavine this morning to make another meeting because he was out doing this. We don't have a final cost, understand exactly how much it's going to be on an annual basis, but we know we can do it within the $20,000, so that's what we're asking for. I suspect in subsequent years, we'll have a better handle on what that'll be, and I suspect it may drop. With that, I'd turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Do we have any questions or comments on this item? Mr. Commissioner Drinkwater, and then Commissioner Hauk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, sorry, I read the staff report twice, and just help me out here. We've been collecting this data for 18 years, and nowhere does it say where anyone might be using it. There's a lot of equivocation about what it could possibly be used for, but nowhere is anyone actually using the data.
Good question. That is part of the analysis that was being done from, based on last year's budget. That's still being put together by Dan McAvoy. He's a PhD climatologist at DRI, and he's putting together some, giving us a better understanding of, you know, what the data is representing and how it validates. They're going to compare it to PRISM model data and try and provide some information on perennial yields for the various hydrobasins. And that was what the original intent on the project was. It's just that the data was never compiled for that purpose. It was just one of those projects that had gone on and on. So, in our first year that we requested funding for this project, we added in Dr. McAvoy's time to do that. That analysis is forthcoming. We have not, he'll be completing it this month, and he'll be presenting that presumably in August or September to this commission. And so, to answer your question, he will provide us some idea of what the data, the value of the data and, you know, whether it's, whether it has validity in its regards to, you know.
So, for, we've been doing it for almost two decades, and we finally get to know whether it's meaningful?
You know, I totally agree with you. That's, that's a good question.
Well, only if we pay another $20,000, then we can find out if it's meaningful.
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
And we, but this, this body, this budget has not been funded.
This has not been from this body.
So, we took it over very recently.
Well, we as a community have been funding this for 20 years.
Oh, that's correct.
Right.
That's, that's the complication in it, you know, you have all this data now, so what do we do with it? So, hopefully, we get a better understanding of this, you know, come September.
Okay. Commissioner Hauk, and then Commissioner DiMartini.
The first part of my question was just answered. And then, secondly, I was wondering if DRI is also using some of the precip gauges which are being used by the Flood Management Authority, Ed Evans and his group.
As far as, is our group using information from this network?
No, is DRI also gathering data from, from your network?
I am not sure we coordinate with them.
Some of the gauges, but I'll get their, oh, sorry.
Thanks.
I know anything that's available through the public directives, we do have that data. But I know if there's anything that the Flood District has put out in specific for their purposes, I don't know that we are getting that data at this point.
They do have precip monitoring gauges. I don't know what the availability is to the public, but I'm sure you guys will have access.
I know, as a little comment with that, the areas where this network does exist right now, it is extremely remote. In fact, we've spent the last week seeing how torn up the roads have been from this past winter. It's in very remote areas, so it's not in any of the urban areas. This network does, exists out in the rural areas. But if the Flood Group is putting out stuff, yeah, I'd love to see that data.
Well, yeah, I mean, all of our, we coordinate with the National Weather Service and NOAA, so all of that, the information that we collect is primarily used for flood forecasting and So, it's tailored for that. We do have a weather station that we installed for the purpose of monitoring some of our restoration projects that we've participated on with all the partners in the Lower Truckee River. So, we have that data as well. But we're happy to coordinate with you offline.
Yep, love to do that.
Great.
Good thing to work on.
Okay. And Commissioner DiMartini?
Yeah, my question, I think it's for Chris, maybe. Can, I realize that there's some analysis that is being looked at, and that's not going to be available for a while. But the raw data that's been collected, is there any way to make that available? I think it's really necessary to try to get that data, if possible, with regards to the current climate that we're experiencing.
Yes, in fact, interesting you mention it. Chris probably recognizes this book. This is our record of, this actually has about the last two and a half years of data from this precipitation network. One of the things I was mentioning to Chris this morning is that it's very anecdotal, but at this point, having looked at what we've collected from this past winter, I found it very interesting, an observation is that the amount of precipitation that fell at the higher elevations normally is significantly more than what fell, falls at the lower elevations. This past winter was not that case. While there was more precipitation at the higher elevations, the quantity that fell at the lower elevations because of the atmospheric river phenomena that brought those storms to our area was, while less, was not as much less as what typically is in a normal orographic storm. So, that's one of the things that I'll be working with Dr. McAvoy to take a little look at and analyze. And more in particular, one of the things we're going to look at is, does the PRISM model, which does not take into account any of this data we're collecting, does it capture that kind of an event? And if it doesn't, then that really does illustrate the value of this type of a network. So, it's one of the things we're going to be looking at just from this past year.
Well.
Yes.
You say you have a couple of years of data in your hand there.
Yes, and there's more data that we've received from Chris that we've been going through, and that's what we're analyzing, is the past 18 years of data. Just happens to be that this is the logbook that is current, that we're, like I said, came down from Peavine, and this is where we wrote our notes for up there.
Is this, I mean, it wouldn't be very much data with only two measurements per year.
That's correct.
Each of the gauges. Is there any way we can get a copy of that?
If you, if you would, if you would like a copy of it, we have that available for anybody who would want it. You know, that's not a, it comes in a, I think there's. who would want it. You know, that's not a -- it comes in a -- I think there's -- I think it's a dozen Excel files or something, or a little bit more, maybe 20 Excel files that.
Yeah, we've recently gone through and put it into the Excel spreadsheet, so it's a little easier to manage and to deal with. So, yeah.
If there's a way to access that, it could be valuable to people that are trying to do studies, whether it be on water rights or anything else.
Very possible, yeah.
Domestic well owners.
Yeah, that's part of what we're hoping that as we go through this data and kind of rework it, that we can -- one of the things that does make it a little bit difficult is where they are, two readings a year. And those, because of, like this year, most of the time, by this point, all the gauges would have been measured for their spring observation. Access to them because of the snow has made it very difficult. So we're about halfway through the network at this point.
Yes.
So that those readings come at different times during the year, so it's not something you can say exactly six months. So we're using some calibration methods for trying to break it down.
Yeah, if I could be interested, Chris, if there's a way I could.
Yeah, but to answer your question, we can make that available to you, Commissioner. No problem. Yeah.
You're welcome. Go ahead, Mr. Smithman.
Thank you. I'd like to address Commissioner Drinkwater's concerns about collecting the data for 18 years. Kind of characterize it as for no purpose. Well, what I'd like to do is recall, as much as I know about the purpose of the data from my tenure with the county, and it predates me, the program predates me. But I remember a schedule of groundwater basins to the north of here that were supposed to be surveyed for precipitation data, and then that data became baseline data for ultimately the construction of a groundwater flow model. Because the county actually had groundwater permits, water rights permits, applications in a number of these basins. Now, over time, the county has backed away from that concept of collecting groundwater and actually, you know, creating a pretty good-sized water importation project. But that was the concept at the time when a hydrologist was hired specifically to collect that data and to construct those groundwater flow models. So as time has changed and the county's no longer going down that path, they don't have those water rights applications any longer. Things have changed, but the program continued to go on. So when it was time for the county to actually make a decision on, do we continue this program because we're divesting ourselves of the water business completely, what do we do with the data? So it looked like it was going to just be orphaned, as Chris said. So we came to this commission and to the Western Regional Water Commission and said, there's 18 years' worth of data here. We can continue the program. Let's figure out what we could use it for, rather than just leave it on a shelf. So we thought maybe it was a good expenditure of money. I don't know what the expenditure was along those 18 years, but I'm sure it's somewhat sizable. And, you know, and it amounts to a hydrologist's career work essentially. So we thought, let's evaluate it thoroughly and see what we've got before we decide to just leave it in the computer. So that's what I know about the project.
Thank you.
So I would only say, one, all I know about the project is what you write in the staff report. So when you don't write that, I don't know that, you know. And it sounds like it started out with a purpose, then the purpose went away when the ground importation projects were tabled, for whatever reason. I'm just curious how it stayed alive. I mean, the county kept it alive for some extra years before they got to try to get -- decided to get out of the water business. And there was no -- was that -- how do I say it? There was no real affirmative decision made. It just -- it stayed alive because no one bothered to kill it? And so we just kept collecting data until the county got out of the water business? And then it became obvious that somebody needs to take responsibility for it, or it's going to die?
I don't know if I would characterize it that way or not, because I wasn't that close to the project. But the last thing that you said about, we're getting out of the water business now, we've got to make a decision on that, I think that's pretty much true. The interim, I'm not so sure. You'd have to ask the right person.
Did you have additional comments? Okay. Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Enlow.
So would there be an issue delaying the approval of this until we get the report back from DRI on what the value of that existing data is?
The only problem that we would -- we have is it's got to be in place and ready to go by October, because that's the water year. And we've got to -- we'd have to go make the collection there, otherwise that -- the year becomes essentially invalid.
So could we structure this in such a way if it was approved, subject to moving forward with it after that report? I mean, I'd like to see what the data shows, actually, before we decide to spend another $20,000. And I understand the timing issues and so forth of getting contracts executed. But could we structure the contract in such a way that approve it now, subject to kind of a reaffirmation once we see that data in August, I assume?
I don't know. It seems to be a practical limitation because of the timing of having to go out to these remote stations using four-wheel drives and ATVs and so on.
I mean, that's why I want to approve it now, so that the contract is in place, but we may choose to terminate it based on review of the data in August.
When is the day -- question, when is the data review scheduled to be ready for presentation?
Well, we had hoped to kind of have some stuff ready here shortly, but this spring, as we've kind of gone through some of the things, and especially with the event of this past year, we've actually found some interesting things we want to look at a little more in detail. And so that's part of what we're trying to assimilate. One of the things that Dr. McAvoy was tasked with was to evaluate each of the locations where these gauges currently exist, see if they are contributing something that is unique. And if they're not, then we would take them out. The other thing, too, he was also tasked with was to identify, are there some things that might indicate there are some better places to relocate them to, where we don't have information? So those are some of the types of things we're still looking at. As we've looked through the data, it's been very interesting. As far as being able to really draw conclusions at this point or recommendations, it's a little premature yet still. But I would hope we could do something like that, certainly in the July-August timeframe. Unfortunately, I'm not Dr. McAvoy.
I -- our standard contract gives us the right to terminate on 30 days' written notice if we determine that it's not something we want to proceed with. But I'm kind of concerned about when we would have the data that -- or the information you're looking for. But so it is a possibility to approve now and terminate later. I guess that's the answer to your question.
I just have a pet peeve of all the effort collecting data and then no one doing anything with it. And this is just another prime example of it.
Yeah.
And we've heard some other comments along those lines, too. And I think you bring up some good points. Do we have a deadline as to when that report is due and when it would come before this body for presentation and review?
Yeah, actually, the contract terminates July 1st. So Dr. McAvoy is working to, you know, meet that deadline. And then I suspect, coming up here, we're probably going to cancel the July meeting based on its proximity to July 4th. So I suspect the next opportunity to hear about this would be in August, our August meeting. So that would be the first available time we could, you know, which is fine. That's what I've indicated to Dr. McAvoy. I spoke to him actually just the other day on the phone about that. So we could definitely have him bring it in in August. Yeah.
I mean, and I don't know procedurally, I don't want to speak out of turn, but if on the August agenda, we had back-to-back items, we had a presentation of the -- well, I guess maybe we'd need some time to think about it. But we could have a presentation on the results, the recommendations, and then after that, we could have this item to approve continuing forward with the work, if that doesn't put anyone in a time crunch as far as contracting logistics. I mean, that's August. You said we need everything in place by the beginning of the water year in October. So.
Possibly one thing -- sorry, to keep into consideration is that if it does come to a conclusion that, yeah, we want to orphan this project, that means somebody will need to go out and collect these things, which are scattered around the county, which it would take a little bit of time, but it's very doable. So, yeah, but timeline you're kind of laying out, I would -- I'm fine with.
Well, we've had some good discussion. Do we have some additional comments?
I just think that if this is of interest to continue, that it might be in the best interest of the commission at this time to approve the expenditure. And if after we hear from Dr. McAvoy the conclusion recommendations, you feel that this isn't of value and don't think this is working, then we would redirect those funds to decommission the project. That's what I would propose.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable. Does anyone else have any comments or ideas? Go ahead.
How long does it take you to contract?
All the way through the approval process, it'll probably take three weeks to a month.
Okay.
Depending on where it sits for signatures, et cetera.
I think this can be continued to August. I'm having a hard time voting yes on this. I'd like to know the purpose. There's data. I'd like a presentation back from DRI and what we're going to do with it. I'm not a fan of just stopping collecting data for the purpose of stopping it. We never know what future generations may need. And I am always in favor of more data is good, but I would really like a reason. So with that, if you're okay, I'll make a motion.
I have a question first, if I may. The funding terminates July 1, right? Are there any funds available for them to do anything after July 1, if you don't approve anything today?
No.
Usually, these contracts lag ahead in their execution. And we will say, this contract is retroactive to July 1, regardless of the data.
I'm sorry, John, I was under the impression they have a separate contract to analyze the data?
It is true. There are two contracts. There's an -- but both of them run the same term. So they're same time, right?
And it's going to end in July?
It will end, both. Both end in July.
Have they billed you?
Not yet.
We have a big problem.
I'm not sure why.
So the analysis is not done?
No, the analysis is ongoing at this time.
But we're under contract for the analysis?
Yes. That was approved last year. You approved that last year. You approved two parts of a contract. One was an analysis, the other was for monitoring.
Madam Chair, I'll be withdrawing my motion.
Okay.
That I didn't make. I will.
I need more coffee. Okay. So if -- just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, we have a contract to perform the analysis, to see what the value of this data potentially is and how it could be used. We also have a contract to collect data, continue this series of data collections. Both of those end July 1st. So if we don't approve this contract today, then there would be -- would there be a gap in data collection between July 1st and October 1st? Or would you be done with data collection under the current contract and then be wanting to start data collection in October per this contract?
That's correct. We would -- yeah, we would -- so the contract ends here at July 1st. That was for this water year. And next water year, starting October 2017, is the new water year. They would go out again and begin monitoring. Twice a year, they do that.
So we wouldn't lose any opportunity to collect data if we don't approve this today?
That's correct.
If we postpone it until August, when the other presentation comes?
That's correct.
Okay, well, that's just some logistics, I guess. So we have a motion that was never made. Would anyone else like to make a motion? I mean, I'm certainly hearing some reservation for the -- from the commission on moving forward with this today. Everyone is very interested to hear the report, review the report, see a presentation.
A question for counsel first. First, I need some guidance before I take a swing at this. If my intent is to do what the Madam Chairwoman just said, is to wait until August to hear the report before approving or not approving a subsequent contract, would I be asking to continue this item?
Yeah, I would think just continue it until the August agenda, and then under future agenda items, which is number 13, request that the report be given at that August meeting also.
So then I move to continue this until the August meeting of this commission?
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Drinkwater and a comment?
I have a comment. I'm still confused.
Okay.
There's a separate contract for the analysis. Would you like to see this analysis? If we have that contract end in July.
That's correct.
How's it going to be done?
He's doing it right now. I mean, he's got 18 years' worth of data to do, to evaluate. But we continue to collect data. He may not be including this year's. That may be a reality in his analysis. I mean, that's just a -- that's because there's a lag time between the time you collect it and the time you can analyze it.
If I could interject, it happens every once in a while that we'll have a final report come in after the term of the contract is expired. And really, it's on good faith. But generally, we don't get the final bill until a quarter or so after the termination date of the contract. We leave the PO open a little bit longer for final billing and that sort of thing. So it happens that we get final reports after the contract expires. For further discussion.
So just as a housekeeping item, before further discussion, do I have a second on the motion that was made?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by, thank you, by Commissioner Enlow. And, okay, so further discussion, comments? Are we still confused?
Continue.
I think we're going to need doughnuts at some point. So I don't know if somebody wants to work that into the motion. Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much for your clarification.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll see you again, August.
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. Item number 11. A non-action item. Okay. Report on legislative activities, including bill draft requests and bills pending in the 2017 session of the Nevada Legislature that may affect or are of interest to the WRWC and the NNWPC. I will turn it over to Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. I will try to keep this non-controversial and simple. So I just want to give a little wrap-up of, yeah, of how things ended up, as I see it anyway. So the legislature did adjourn Monday night. Out of the 12 bills in the staff report that we ended up tracking, all of them passed but one, and that was the fracking bill, AB 159, which died in committee after a lot of controversy, as I take it. Out of the bills that did pass, the remaining 11, eight have already been approved by the governor, and five are on the way to him or are already on his desk. Let's see, other items of interest. The bills that we supported, or that the Western Regional Water Commission supported, the first was the cloud seeding bill, which died in committee and didn't go anywhere again this session. The second was support for the rainwater collection provisions of SB 74. As it turned out, those were removed from SB 74, but there was a duplicate, a bill that duplicated those provisions of that. That was AB 138, which did eventually pass. It has been signed by the governor. It is effective July 1. It allows the collection of rainwater for limited domestic purposes and for wildlife usage. SB 74 also contained a provision relating to this commission, though the title to the bill said it changed the membership of the Western Regional Water Commission. It really changed the membership of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, this board. And all it did really was remove what became a practical duplication. It removed a non-voting seat on this board for the planning section of the State Division of Water Resources. So that is now under the state engineer's office. The state engineer also has a non-voting representative on this board. So now there's only one representative from the state engineer's office. There's one bill that the Western Regional Water Commission was watching that did not make it to my list. Their position on it was neutral. It was AB 379, which was -- allowed local governments to create parks, trails, and open space districts. There were lots of amendments to that bill. There were lots of controversies. It did pass. It was approved by the governor just two days ago, and it does become effective July 1. I'm going to need to do a thorough review of that bill to see what the eventual specific provisions are. But that was one we just had a peripheral interest in because it had some water quality implications. So if anyone has -- any of the commissioners have individual comments, they're welcome to make them under this item. It's a non-action item. Or if they have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions, comments? No? No?
Reprimands?
Okay.
Okay, well, moving on to item number 12, the Program Managers' Report. I'll turn it over to Jim Smithman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Program Manager's Report has the two typical items in there. There's a status report of projects on the work plan. There's a couple of the projects. This lags behind generally our receipt of invoices and processing, but it's largely up to date. There's a couple of projects that we probably have to remove. But I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of the particular line items or fields. And then the second item is the financial report on the Regional Water Managers' Fund, both the collection of revenues and the expenditures. And I see that we're on track for receiving the revenue from the 1.5% fund and actually exceed what our projection was a little bit. So I think we'll end the year in good shape. We've got one more period to post. And then you can see that our expenditures are well under what our revenues collections have been and it's just slightly over $1 million in expenditures. So we're looking good as far as our financials as well. So again, a non-action item, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? No? All right. Moving on to item number 13. Discussion regarding possible agenda items for or cancellation of the July 5, 2017 NNWPC meeting and other future meetings and possible direction to staff. Mr. Smithman?
Thank you again. See what we did there with the and/or possible cancellation?
It was hard for me to read that with no commas.
With no slash, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, sorry about that. But yeah. Traditionally, we've canceled the July meeting because of how close it is to the Independence Day holiday. And so I will leave that up to you as far as action on this. One thing that I would add, though, is that the following meeting would be August 2. And then items that I would have queued up for that one would be a project report or a progress report from UNR, from Dr. Pigila, on the Advanced Water Treatment Project. We do have final reports for Tasks 1 and 2. I think they're good reports. I think the work is good. So we'd be happy to bring a progress report on that project. And then the report from DRI on evaluation of the long-term precipitation data. Chris and I will make sure that we put that item on the agenda before the continuation of item 10 that was on today's agenda, so that you can do things in order. And then I'd be happy to entertain any other recommendations or suggestions for agenda items and a motion on the July 5 meeting.
Okay. Thank you for that. So do we have a recommendation, a motion? Commissioner Drinkwater?
I said my piece today already.
Come on. Okay, so you're asking, you know, do we need to make a motion to cancel the July 5 meeting? Do we want to hold a July 5 meeting? And then, does anyone have items to add to the, go ahead?
I move to cancel the July 5.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Houk. Okay, motion, second. No public comment. I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we will cancel the July meeting. We'll look forward to seeing these items on the August meeting. Okay? So then with that, I will move on to item 14, Commission comments. I guess we'll start, Commissioner Wright, do you have any comments? No, move on down the line? No, no, no. Anyone?
Did we get done with the agenda?
Do we get done with the, oh, as far as requesting future items?
Yes.
You could probably request it under this item or we could reopen item 13?
Yeah, reopen.
All right, so we'll reopen that.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion on those either. I generally take those as direction to put them on later.
Did you have something to?
Yes, and I don't know, why it would be, but I am concerned about the potential of needing coordination with regards to the studies that are going on or may be going on or not regarding the North Valleys. The three or four playas or terminal lakes. And I think I'd have to say that so far, I think the situation appears to be like there's a lack of coordination. And also that this Commission has been, not really been involved in what's going on. I know we've done previous studies and looked at alternatives. But here we are today and those alternatives haven't been implemented yet. So what I'm asking is, could we have a, I guess, an agenda item that would discuss what we might be doing? And it would have to be done quickly. So I think the August meeting, we would need to be prepared to make decisions with regards to how we're going forward, with regards to possibly setting up a committee or some type of joint method for all the agencies to participate in looking towards the future and how we're going to protect these valleys in case there's more rain. So what kind of agenda item would that be, Jim?
We might request a report from the entities who are involved in responding and preparing for next water year and at least get the Commission fully informed on what's happening now. And then maybe take action from there if you think that would suffice.
I would like that at least, I think, and maybe as a sub-item of that, to take other action regarding formation of a committee or doing other things as may be necessary. And the reason I'm saying this is this could require emergency attention. The situation is that it takes a long time to do anything with this water. And you can do a little bit at a time, which could have been done already this year, but it wasn't. And so I don't think we want to be late again. And so.
Well, if I, I need to jump in. Am I on? I can never see this light. I'm sorry. If we're talking about forming subcommittees and things to, you know, oversee and affect the activities of Reno Sparks and Washoe County, I think we need a specific motion and a board approval to put that on a future agenda. If you're just looking for a report on what those entities are doing, I think the motion to be would, like as Jim said, request a report from them about their flood mitigation activities in the North Valleys. So for the record, we're back on agenda, item 13, possible future agenda items. And something like that, I don't think, we have never traditionally done just by direction. We've done that as a board. So if we're looking for a motion on a subcommittee or something like that, I think we need to be really clear about what this board wants staff to do. Thank you.
Well, John, any questions? I have a big concern about the authority of this board to form a subcommittee to review the work of basically two public works directors and their city councils and board of directors. So I cannot support anything along these lines. I think it could be wholly appropriate to request that the City of Reno and Washoe County come and give us a report of what they're, whether they choose to come or not is up to them. I can see that being, you know, our job here is to look at the big picture planning. What's going on in that area right now is purely operational and under the capital improvements plans of Washoe County and the City of Reno. I think we are way out of bounds to look at any kind of oversight over that.
Well, maybe that, I didn't, maybe that was a poor choice of terms, not oversight per se, but review or direction or anything along those lines. I mean, this body is an advisory body to the Western Regional Water Commission. And this body's primary task is to develop the comprehensive regional water management plan. So how far that goes down into operational detail is certainly a question. That's why I think if we want an agenda item along these lines, we need a motion to do it and we need board approval to do it. We don't have an agenda committee anymore, so these decisions have been made by this board as a whole.
Well, if, maybe I can, I don't know if this will be a solution or not, but my thought is, is if we can solicit a report from the agencies that are involved, which would be Washoe County and City of Reno. I don't know if there's any other ones. Would Sparks be involved? I don't know. In the Northern Valleys at all?
We have a Northern Valley as well, yeah. We share it with Washoe County.
So what I would, my agenda item would be is to get a, solicit a report, if they're willing to give a report at the August meeting. And the other part of the agenda item would be that we could have consideration to make a request, if it's acceptable to the Commission, to form a committee. We wouldn't, I wouldn't be asking that to be done now. It would be something that we would decide at that point in time whether to make a motion or not to the Western Regional, to form a committee. So that at least something could be underway potentially as early as the beginning of September. That's.
Well, yeah, I just think you need a motion and approval from this board.
To get an agenda item on to consider a committee. If you want to make that motion, that's fine.
Well, I was thinking the motion would be made potentially next time. That's when the motion would.
Yeah, but we need an agenda item for that motion to be made next time. We need an agenda item that says, discussion and possible approval of a recommendation of the Western Regional Water Commission to form a committee on North Valleys flood problems, something along those lines. You need a motion, we need a motion, we need consensus. We need a majority of vote of this body to put that on our next agenda. That's what I'm saying.
I'll second your motion.
Well, so it seems to me like maybe we're putting the cart before the horse here. Go ahead.
Daniel, it occurs to me and to John's point with regards to what's going on with the three entities and their current involvement. We did get somewhat of a report from Kimball Corbridge as to what kind of actions that they anticipate doing to alleviate some flood elements. And I think that might be of value to you, Commissioner DiMartini. And maybe that would help alleviate some of your concerns that the entities are in fact doing something. I'm sure we can get Washoe County, Reno Sparks to come and give us some kind of a, you know, an overview of what they intend to do. I don't know if that would be satisfactory for you. Because outside of that, I'm not sure the board has any ability to do anything else other than, you know, get an informational report. But I'm sure you'd be satisfied with what they're doing. I'm sure they're actively engaged in the problem. I'd just break that as a suggestion, maybe that would satisfy.
I appreciate that. And I was going to say, you know, Commissioner Solero represents Washoe County. He's not here right now. He did make some comments earlier in the agenda regarding some of the work that they're doing. And it is my understanding that the entities, you know, who have the jurisdiction to be dealing with these issues are working on this issue. I don't want anybody to leave this room thinking that nothing's going on because a lot is going on. The entities are coordinating with each other and they are monitoring the situation. So it's not within my purview to know all of the details of what they're doing. I do know some of it. It would be nice if they could come and give us an update on what they've been doing and what their plans are for the upcoming season. I think that's a reasonable request. And beyond that, you know, I really don't know personally if it's within the purview of this Commission to become more involved in that. But it seems to me like that sort of discussion would come from that report at that time. And I understand what you're saying about needing board approval to put an item on the agenda for that specific action. But I don't know if we're ready to do that today, if that makes sense. I mean, if somebody would like to make a motion and we can see if we get a second on it, certainly do that.
I think I'd like to make a motion. It'll be a two-part motion, I guess. Part one would be that we get a report with regards to the three entities, if they want to, to let us know what the general concept of the plan for protection is and what they've done with regards to researching previous alternatives that were evaluated by this Commission in the past. And what conceptually is foreseen to protect against the potential of flooding in the Northern Valleys for this next year and beyond. Because I think we're a little bit lacking from the standpoint that we have, we've made recommendations in the past and I don't think they're being implemented yet. But that would be my motion, part one. Part two would be that we decide to consider the formation of a committee of this board that would involve obviously the entities that would be involved in coordination of some of those efforts from a planning standpoint. So it's kind of a two-part motion, I think. Would entertain a second for either part or both.
All right, so I'll bring it back to the Commission. We have a motion. Do we have a second? From anyone? No seconds, so what does that mean? The motion dies. Would somebody like to make another motion? And again, we're on item 13, so we're talking about future meeting, agenda items. We have decided to cancel the July meeting, but now we're talking about agenda item requests.
At that point, then, which I don't think I need a motion on, is the agenda item for the report.
Just the report?
Yes.
So just requesting sort of a status report?
Yes.
Update on?
Requesting staff, yeah, to request the entities to provide a report on current activities, I think.
Yes.
You know, and we've kind of treated those as a consensus unless someone on the board objects, then we say, yeah, that's fine. But what I don't want to get is a situation where individual Commissioners can direct what an agenda is. For me, we've never done it that way. And so that's why we kind of have to go by a majority rule. That's all I'm trying to, I'm just trying to stay within the guidelines that we've observed for the last eight years.
Yes.
Well, so that said, does anyone have an issue with putting that item on the agenda? Just asking Mr. Smithman to request an update on those activities? Everyone's okay with that? All right. Okay, well, I guess we'll leave it at that for today.
Okay.
And sort of a to-be-continued discussion. We'll see what happens if they come and give a presentation. And so with that, we'll move back to item 14. We did have some comments from the Commission. I've gone down. Do we have any other comments on this end? Anybody else? No? All right, so I'll move on to item 15, staff comments.
Just a quick one. I have done some interviews and made an offer for a full-time secretary to replace June Davis. And she should start on June 19. That's what our plan is right now. And so this would effectively be Donna Fagan's last meeting with us. So I just want to commend Donna for all of the support and work that she has done behind the scenes and at meetings, in addition to her regular duty. She's really done a great job and I appreciate her very much. So thanks, Donna.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a lot of work. All right. Any other comments from staff? No? Okay. On to item 16, public comment. I do have one public comment card. Kathy Brandhorst. And anyone else who wishes to speak, please just fill out a comment card.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to tell you that the MRI was also used to try to remove cancer out of bodies. And also, my mail is still being stolen. And also, my mail is still being stolen, my US mail, I went to the post office to pick up my mail, and he said there is absolutely nothing to pick up. But just before I arrived to the post office, two people were arrested for stealing my mail. They found out that that mail says my name on it, and they still opened up the package and pretended that they have a business going on, and they do not have that business at all, because the mail is mine and not theirs. So they will be charged embezzlement. Also, I just wanted to tell you again, if you're going to steal my checks, you will be put out of business, period. You won't have a job, you won't have nothing at all, because you will be charged embezzlement. Those are my checks, not yours, they don't have your name on them, so don't spend them. Also, I just wanted to tell you that I'm still having troubles where I live, because the break-ins are really bad over there where they have to break into my home. They even broke my lock on my door in order to get inside my home. I know you people are very poor people, you don't have an income at all, you don't even have a check in your hand, you don't even have a dollar in your pocket either, because you have been charged embezzlement. You don't have nothing. You can't even rent, you can't pay your rent, you can't pay your gas and electric, that's why you have to put up the poles and wires. And you also have to put up the poles and wires for your hot water. That's why my water's always going down, so is my gas and electric in my home, because you don't have the money to pay for it. Also, I just wanted to tell you too that the problem is never going to go away, because the poor people are still in our area. Are you going to afford to try to pay the zillion dollars that's going to be owing with all these poles and wires in our city? I don't think so. I think the whole city's going to go down really fast.
All right, Agenda Item 17, Adjournment.
Move to adjourn, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.